We will reconvene back into the workshop. We've got a couple, a couple more things that P and Z is going to share with us and discuss, and then we will move into executive session, and then hopefully before tomorrow, we'll call it a night, so.
What about that Chapter 3? Are we even going to talk about it?
Well, that's, yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna, so we just discussed that one. Counsel, here's, in discussion with P and Z and with code enforcement, here's kind of my thought, I'm putting this to you guys as the decision makers here, so it does not sound like we are anywhere near where we need to be on making any sort of decision on Chapter 3 tonight. I know Dorothy, you have a lot of questions.
And I gave you the mic.
Yeah, yeah, those have been forwarded, so recommendation from code enforcement and P and Z is essentially that we just tabled that whole thing for this evening. Let's not go down that, that rabbit hole. As long as counsel, you guys are good with that, and we will, my recommendation to you guys is, any concerns or issues or questions you have, start reaching out to both entities, and let's get those answered.
I can forward my comments to you, too.
You did.
To Mike, oh, I did.
Well, you forwarded me an email, and I think it was Mike and me, I know I was on the email.
Okay, good, good.
That you, you were super confused about what all those changes were with the international code and what have you, so I did see those, and I haven't been back with Mike yet to see if there's a way we can clarify that.
Yeah, so, okay, so we will, we will continue to move past 077, and we will drop down now to the next item up for bids, which was discussion item 25082, discuss review the adjustment process for the comprehensive plan.
Correct. All right, final draft of the Morgan's Point Resort comprehensive plan will be reviewed by all members of P and Z committee. This document is exceptionally large, and will require extensive reorganization. Information provided to develop a summary document that we can have and be able to be distributed to Morgan's Point Resort residents. As y'all know, if you've seen it, the draft is 12 pages, I'm sorry, 12 chapters long, 363 pages long, so it's quite extensive. What we're, the way we're approaching it is we're recommending dividing the draft document into about three different sections, which will be kind of the surrounding area information, the background and history of Morgan's Point Resort, and then goals and objectives for the next 10 to 20 years. So with that, we have had two workshops so far on this, September 27th and October the 11th. We've had good participation with planning and zoning, we've also had EDC there, Linda Bridges, we've had Dorothy there, we've had Donna there. We've given an invitation out to all the steering committee and stakeholders, or the actual process itself that we went through, that everybody came into this building and other buildings to talk about what Morgan's Point would look like over those next periods of years. So it, we, we've got other meetings already set up during this month and into next month. We've got three more meetings, four hours apiece. Those meetings will be posted, I think they're already out there right now.
They're already posted.
Okay, they're already posted, so anytime anybody from the city council would like to be there, and/or any other steering committee or stakeholders, they're welcome. But we are moving forward with starting to develop a document that will have various chapters in it, and will indicate where we've been with the 1994 comprehensive plan, and where we will hopefully move forward to today and into the future. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have right now about it.
Well, I have kind of a comment that I'd like counsel to kind of maybe sign off on, that we've talked about in the meeting, and that is, what do we do with the Colliers Plan? What do we do with the $150,000 brick anchor that we got that's, you know, almost 400 pages? There's a lot of great historical information, there's some really good pictures, they did workshops, they did community surveys, all those type things can be incorporated into P and Z's plan. But they're not using, they're not going to end up with an edited Colliers Plan. They're going to end up with a recommended plan from P and Z and all these stakeholders using almost the Colliers Plan as a source document. And I think it'll be more digestible, I think it will not just go on a shelf and gather dust, I think it'll be a working document, but I want to make sure you guys are okay with that. And then the concept of taxpayers paid $150,000 for it, when we get to the end of the day, is that out there on the website stamped, you know, draft, not reviewed, inaccuracies, because I mean, there's a lot of inaccuracies, there's tables that are wrong, numbers that are wrong, percentages, I mean, it's, it's not a very good document, I mean, I hate to say it, but anyway, do you want to stew on that for a little bit? Because that is directionally how P and Z would like to go, and I think that's a big, the conceptual agreement, that at the end of the day, it will come back to counsel, but I don't want them to go down this road. If you guys know, say no, we want the Colliers Plan, and we want it edited. Now, we're updating, there's a lot of thing, a lot of information, there's 2020 information, and COG is helping us come up with the 25 information, so it will be more current information. What are some other things that?
That's, I mean, yeah, I mean, just to give you an, excuse me, to give you an idea, we've done about the first three chapters of the 12 with some consolidation, but we need more in there, so we're trying to glean information from the Collier Report, making it meaningful for city council, P and Z, and residents to get to a summary, we think we're going to end up with somewhere between 100 pages plus, once we're all said and cut from the 363. So you can see, we're going to be manipulate, not manipulating, but gleaning just the information we thinks is important out, so that the summary report we will end up with will be the one that hopefully city council will adopt.
Yeah, we are, yeah, and then also, all the goal, yeah, I know, they really, they really stewed on it, because it was like, we paid so much money, but they also talked about putting all the goals and objectives instead of chapter by chapter, putting all the goals and objectives of our master plan all together.
Yep.
Which I think makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
I was just going to add that the council, prior to the election, when this came up, they realized the lack of value that was received from Collier Engineering, and this is no, this, this, that's the impression I took from it, at least, and that they agreed at the time, and then I guess this is a reaffirmation, that that information would be updated to make it more worth, usable, if you will, to council and the community. So I think it's been, that's how you started, that's where you're at, and I guess a reaffirmation to that, saying this is good, just continue down this road. I don't know, and that's something for legal to weigh in, on the legal side, if it's Collier Engineers who want to provide it, as far as I'm concerned, they didn't do a good service to the community, I think it was, that said, I don't know what, if it's an update of that plan on a summary, and that might be doable, I don't know, Neil could weigh in on whether, because there is, that is their product, they provided it, we paid them, we separated from them out of.
We never accepted it.
We didn't accept it as adopted plan, that's true, but it's still the work product of theirs, so I'm just saying, just make sure that it's legal.
If you take it for it, it goes, all right, I want the property.
I'm gonna let legal, I don't know the answer to a lot of those questions, as far as whether, whether Collier Engineering did the work, the summary is going to use some of that, I don't think there's anything wrong with that for a summary that we're creating, because a lot of it's information we have provided to them to start with, but I don't know.
A lot of it is third source.
Yes, yes, so I think, but I would not say that.
Not using their proprietary information.
That's the only thing I'm cautious about, yeah, because it is an engineering firm.
In fact, we're not even using, I guess we're kind of following their chapters, so we might be following the format.
I would ask for a legal review of it before we go too far with that, that's the only thing I'm asking.
Neil, what's your reaction?
They did, and I don't, it was before, it was February of 2022.
22, 22.
I'll pull that out. Yeah. I'll, I'll pull that out, I just don't, I know I've got it, though.
Well, the question is, in my mind, I mean, so we don't have any rights to even use the information in that document, maybe, but you guys are kind of, well, we are going to use their survey.
Oh, yeah.
We are, I mean, they did a lot of work that I don't want to throw away.
Yeah, it is our product to use moving forward, like any other city, the question is, I just don't know, and going back to that contract, I don't remember it because it was a dated one, but I do know I have it, so let me get it sent to Neil, let him review it, knowing full well, we're going to be gleaning stuff from that, that, just see how much leeway we have with it.
Right.
Just to make sure we're on the same side.
Sorry, Mary, what'd you say? Oh, we do, we are citing.
Well, absolutely, we will give, we will give recognition to their.
There you go, and that might, but let's get the contract.
We give them recognition for the survey that's in there.
Right.
And any work product, but as far as the document itself, we don't want to, we don't want to accept it.
So, but that, I'll get the contract to Neil, and with that understanding, I think that gives us a little bit better of, understanding where we're moving forward to make sure we're covered from the legal side of the house.
Yeah.
Because some, some engineering firms, they are very picky about stuff, but this is.
They can't force us to adopt it, so.
No, no, they won't, they tried, they tried several times, I think, to get us to adopt it, we said no, it's not what we're looking for. That said, referencing and stuff like that, I think we'll be fine, it's, there's a workable document, but as long as they're recognized somewhere in that document that you're using, I think that will go a long way, but I'll get the thing to Neil, and we'll see from there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions, comments?
A lot of work that's going into this, guys, and they are working hard, four-hour meetings, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, they're, they're on a mission.
On a mission.
Yep.
Okay, continuing on, discussion item 25083, communication policy after P and Z decisions for applicants and city councilor.
This was something that just came up in one of our planning and zoning meetings, to where we can formalize a little bit better our communication process back to residents of whatever decisions we are making or adopting at that point, even before we give it back to the city council for recommendation. We want to make sure that if the resident needs more information back to us, that we have a plan in place of how we let them know that, whether it's us. Oh, okay. All right, so whether it's us going back to Mike to get that information, or us making sure we're going back to the resident to make sure they know there's something missing here, and we've got to have this done, a good example is a plats, replating two lots into one, making sure that that gets done even before they get it to planning and zoning for review of a variance or whatever else we have out in front of us. So, and if we have an ordinance, like we've got Chapter 3 that we're working on, we'd like to be able to know that ordinance, once we recommend it, and y'all are good with it, and adopt it, and approve it, then we know that the MUNI code now gets changed, it goes from whatever it was to whatever the new adopted MUNI code should be. So that's something that we're going to work on internally, we just want y'all to know that, and it sounds like with what y'all were talking about earlier, about the management of the governance plan, that y'all are going in that direction, too, and maybe we all dovetail together to where all that comes together and makes sense. So that's, that's that one.
Counsel, any discussion?
Questions, thoughts?
Okay. I'll, I'll toss one thing in there, and this is more for the city manager, and probably in the governance model, and tonight was a perfect example with the presentation that we had. What I would like to see, and I think it would benefit all of counsel, is anytime we have a presenter who is scheduled to address counsel, if they have a presentation, they need to provide the slides beforehand that go into the packet, so counsel, instead of trying to strain your eyes to see the TV, I mean, that's great for our residents, but, you know, I would like to be able to go slide by slide with them, so.
Yeah, and it gives us a chance to digest it, come up with questions, and, you know, they'll probably answer all the questions before we ask them, but still, it gives us a time to think about it.
Yeah, concur, and I, and I think it's, I mean, not only fair to you guys, but I think it's fair to the presenter as well, that, you know, that they, they can provide that, so, okay, just food for thought. 2508, 084, discuss a resolution to approve a name, place designation for NPR, Dennis, I'll hand that one over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, city council, this is Morgan's Point, just outside of Houston, that is wanting to use Morgan's Point for their city as a designation through the postal service. Unfortunately for them, we as a community years ago decided to use Morgan's Point and Morgan's Point Resort on the application for, through the postal service. That said, they've applied to the postal service to get that designation themselves, which it is the name of their city, and the postal service referred them to us, saying the city has to release that name, place designation. We've talked about this before, we provided them with the response that initially wanted, that they found, the postal service said, no, we need something different. Over the course of time, more on my fault for not getting it faster, but to the frustration, I'm sure, of the city manager of Morgan's Point, that, that, that we need to get this resolved, well, we come up with the new wording, gave it to them, they didn't like that, they wanted to change one provision of it, we got that changed, this has all been sent through Neil, he's in favor of, gave it its approval, if you will. So what we've done is we drafted a letter, I believe you got the letter in your packet, no idea.
I can get it.
All right.
Oh, on the table.
It's on this table here, it is, and really, the, the hangup was, well, the hangup was, the, they, we had pre-existing documents would not be used, they would still be used a certain way, he asked if we could include historical reference in the use of any pre-existing documents reflecting this same name. I didn't want to, to recommend anything that limited your ability to use Morgan's Point, because we have seen that in the past, where people made mistakes, whether it's a grant application, whether it was something in another state, from the state or county, they used Morgan's Point instead of Morgan's Point Resort. So we wanted to make sure we had that flexibility. Give that to her, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, this, this allows us to continue to use what we've always used, but it does allow them to have the rights to Morgan's Point, and it really doesn't affect the city. And just, you all gave the consensus before, and here we are with a draft, one that they apparently will accept, and so unless there's an objection, I'd like to go ahead and see, we won't be able to act on it today, because it didn't make the agenda for the reger session, so that was, that's on me, but we'll need to get that thing right back to you next reger session for consideration, but that's what it's about.
Okay, sure, and I think we did say that made a lot of sense.
You did.
And we were for it, but I would like to have a copy of the resolution next time also.
No, no, we don't, we couldn't do it today, we'll have the resolution.
No, no, next time.
Yes, it's in, actually, in the packet, we'll have it for you, in fact, I'm reading from it. So that the main thing is, they didn't like the wording that was used, it was too restrictive, and then we went back and forth, well, we gave you what you asked for, and we had other priorities, and they didn't come up to be one of them. We got it to the point where they, they've agreed to it, we've agreed to it, if you all agree to it, then we'll bring it back next week, and, or next meeting, and have you all act on it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, 25085, last one up, discuss the status of the abandoned property, 43 Morgan's Point Boulevard.
Okay, this one, on our agenda summary there, this property's been abandoned for quite some time, there've been other, there've been other attempts to have the ownership transferred to Morgan's Point, which were not successful. Morgan's Point has spent some funds on this property, and attorneys in anticipation that the transfer would happen, but it has not. Right now, Morgan's Point's policy on such pri, what is, now, the question is, do we have a policy on abandoned property, and what can be done with one in question, since it's currently sitting as vandalized? The address of that is 43 Morgan's Point Boulevard, and really, our recommendation here is, do we have a status on the property, if anybody happens to know, and what, if anything, can we be done to bring the property up to standards? And then if we don't have anything in place, where our action item here is try to establish an abandoned property policy for all buildings in Morgan's Point Resort and residents.
So I did do a little bit of research on this, because when I was touring 18 Mustangs, I noticed a bunch of abandoned trailers in that same area, and so I thought, it's not just for this one here, but it's for other abandoned properties, broken windows, totally unsafe environment. We, I can't find an ordinance that we have on abandoned real estate, we have tons of wording on abandoned property, but that's personal property, I went into the Texas law, they have a lot of regulations on a personal property, and on, you know, money in bank accounts that need to be taken.
Right.
But on real estate, it's hard, so when I, I finally found something in the Texas law that said TECQ rules, believe it or not, TECQ again, so TECQ does have a policy on disposal of nuisance or abandoned buildings, compliance resources, so there's a whole thing in here that TECQ says we need to do as a city, but then I also went and I looked at the property tax, they haven't paid property tax since 17, they owe $34,000, and they owe $10,000 to the city of Morgan's Point in back taxes. So the question is, do we come at it from the nuisance and abandoned, or do we come at it from getting it on the block of abandoned property for non-payment of property taxes? So I think there's a couple ways to go, but I can't find anything in our ordinance.
Yeah, we don't.
The state wasn't much helpful, TECQ was the best source I had, and it, it gave you conditions of what you needed.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of TECQ doing that, no, I trust you, I'm just saying, no, I trust you, I'm just saying, I wasn't aware of that being in a regulatory body in that regard.
I agree, all of a sudden, but I went, I'll go look, go down that rabbit hole, okay, so, we need, we need an ordinance, because it did say, the Texas state law did say that you should follow your county and municipal ordinances.
And I have to look, I thought there was dealing with disrepair is in there, so I was, that may have been, it's the property owner's responsibility, but I, that person, I could be wrong, but I was told earlier on, because I actually, to be honest with you, I was looking for the property myself, until, well, I found Linda, I think they were looking, EDC was using it.
It's a great piece of property.
Yeah, I think they were looking for more commercial purposes, but that said.
No, it's residential.
No, but I think there was other discussion behind the scenes about what could be possibly done with that, but not from me.
Commercial.
No, but my point is, is that, that person's passed on, and I don't know if it's caught up in an estate issue, or.
I found that the owner of the property is Richard McGuire, who lives right here in our city on 72 Cheyenne Trail.
Well, see, and I was told it belonged to somebody here.
I looked it up on the Belcad records, he's owned it since March of 84, according to Belcad.
Wow, that is wild.
Okay, look, it's 71202 is the ID number, but it's a bigger prop, it's a bigger problem than just this one property, we have this issue. No, that's the address on Belcad. Oh, okay, go down that rabbit hole. Okay, let's stay focused. But anyway, yeah, so your question is, do we need ordinances? I think we do, but I think it's.
Sounds like it must be wide open for whatever your ordinance that you want to develop in your community and/or.
There might be a dangerous, sometimes the ordinances are covered like dangerous buildings ordinance, and then that may be also something covered in it, I don't know, I'll find out, I don't have.
On this property, we may just be able to get it for tax.
You could just go that route, but it depends if the city ever has a plan for it, like in this case, I was, it wasn't somebody that said, hey, I'm going, we're going to do this, but it was one of the things in discussion, so the last thing I was going to do is try to.
I'm thinking the city stays out of it.
If they do, and it shows up.
And it goes into abandoned properties in the state.
Get it on the tax rolls, yeah.
Get it auctioned.
Yeah, that's the way it should go.
So then the city stays out of it, but if we do want it, then that's another issue.
Right.
Right. Well, I'm curious, I was going to talk to Mary about that later, but how many of these do we have that owe us $10,000 in property taxes? And why isn't Belcad acting? I had that same. But, but it's the city's money, and so we're not going to just stand by and let someone else manage us, I mean, we need to actively be involved in collection, if, once Belcad has exhausted their resources.
And I'm not sure if the, the city is the sole decision maker.
No, no, I'm sure we're not.
Because you got other players involved, but it's something that the sheriff sale would normally, I think we could go with the sheriff's department and find out, they're the ones that manages it anyway.
Right.
Anything we do to make, I'm sorry, no, but you can actually put, if we do anything to reconcile or fix a health and safety issue, then there's nothing wrong with placing lean on it, to get that money back, you may get it for a while, but once it changes hands, you can.
I don't know.
71202.
That's what I'm thinking, and then the city's out of it, and it's just done in due course, but right now, it's a hazard to the city. Okay. But what right do we have to foreclose? Right. Right now, it's a hazard to the city, it's not just, you know, a nice property sitting there with unpaid taxes, it's broken glass everywhere, I went over there, all, all the windows are completely knocked out, the glass is relatively fresh, because it didn't have weather on it, and it is gutted, there's no sheet rock, there's no appliances, I mean, I think there was a toilet, but, I mean, it was gutted. Okay, well, whatever legal we need to do, but. That's why I went down that route. It's a gutted building. I mean, in 18, it was appraised at 80,000, I mean, the land, I think, was only appraised at 50, I bet the la, it looks like it's three or four lots put together, it's a nice property, I mean, sized property. I, I was talking to Mark, I said, I'd like to buy this.
You want to dig into that one for us? You want to dig into that one for us?
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I just, but we do need a city policy.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Procedures in place to do this, but that's okay, we'll, we'll deal with it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll give you that TECQ reference, and I thought it was really helpful, for me.
No, it's, and you're right, it's nice, plus the, I mean, once the building's gone, I think.
Right, it needs to be demoed.
Okay, so we need to develop a policy on that, and then Dennis is going to get with the appraisal's office, district folks, people, persons, and start that ball rolling, whoever you need to.
So do we want to ask P and Z to draft something? Do we want to give them guidance for drafting? What do you need from us?
Or would you really have Mike go ahead and work with my office and come up with a draft, to work from that?
We can do that, or we could go to SitCOG and see if they have anything.
That's even better, they have planners.
They would have anything from either other resources they've got.
Okay.
From abandoned property, we could, we could go, I mean, yeah, Ashlyn or David, yeah, Ashlyn or David.
Well, once we know the ordinance. Well, once we know the ordinance, we'll be able to draft a policy to enforce that ordinance, yeah, okay?
All right.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Great, thanks for sticking around.
Yes, really.
Uh, okay, we've covered finance director, city managers, so now we're going to recess out of the workshop, and we are going to move into executive session. The City Council will adjourn into an executive session for a discussion on personal matters pursuant to Section 551-074 of the Texas Government Code. Okay, turn all these things off.